It's five thirty, and I will bring this city council meeting, October the twentieth. And we'll start with the invocation, and I call upon Aaron Christensen of Lake Region Chaplain. And a vet. So thank you for your service.
I just want to pause for a moment and thank you. Thank you, leaders, for raising your hand and practicing this thing called democracy. All right, we've been handed a beautiful thing. And you don't have to go that far back in history or that far around the world to see that this is not the norm that's out there. So thank you for coming into the trenches to make this community a better place. In the land of the free, I invite you to pray according to your tradition as I pray according to mine. Let us pray. Gracious heavenly father, we pause to say thank you. Thank you for this, this great thing that was handed to us, that we have the opportunity in this space, in this place, to practice democracy and justice and to advocate for what is good for our community, for our neighbors, and for our loved ones. Please fill the walls of this room with wisdom and understanding and be with the leaders as they make decisions and be with the citizens as they express their voice and help a beautiful middle ground to be found so that Fergus Falls may be a place of hope and purpose and meaning for all that enter our city limits and that this, this may flow beyond to our world. Please bless this meeting. I pray in your name. Amen.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call, please.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. The first item on the agenda is open forum. Anybody wishing to discuss a topic that's not on the city agenda, welcome to come forward, state your name and the city in which you live.
Hello, Mayor, Council. Dwayne Cookman, live in Fergus Falls, Stanton Avenue. Listening to the meeting of the whole, I, about the old dairy property, and I was, you know, I've heard stuff about the quotes for the, for the crossings, but I'm just like, and it matched the same value that it was to tear down the buildings or what you, City of Fergus Falls reimbursed, the Port Authority, was at 1.2 million dollars?
That was to purchase the land for the trail from, from this, from the, the Port Authority owned the twenty-seven acres.
Okay.
And then the city purchased, I can't remember the acreage, but eight or nine?
Eleven point six.
So then the city purchased that eleven point six acres from the Port Authority.
Okay, so they still own, because I thought it was under reconstruct, it was reconstruction for taking down the buildings.
No.
That's what was in the minutes.
No.
Okay.
So it was for the piece of land where the trail would go.
Okay. But is that the same as what it's going to cost for the railroad crossings?
More or less. Yeah, rail crossings were about 1.3 million, I believe, for the pair.
But there was some other discussion, listening to it, that you'd have to give up some, or if you wanted both of them, Buse and Broadway?
The negotiation with the railroad was that in order to have additional access on St. Andrews, you know, typically to add a crossing, they, they want three crossings closed. That obviously wasn't practical, you know, within the city limits to close three crossings. So we ended up at a place where, you know, they would accept the city improving the signals on South Union and the signals and the crossing itself on Sheridan.
Okay.
And that would be at the city's cost.
Okay. So how, when you took Broadway away, was that a one for one?
Yeah.
For a different place?
Yeah, for Buse.
In the, in the past? In the past, yes.
I don't remember the streets.
I thought we had to give up two.
Oh. Um, for...
Because, because I think in the past you had Buse and you had Broadway, but there was some negotiating at some period of time where you gave up Broadway for...
No.
Maybe that was...
Are you, that was sort of Tower, that was Tower, I believe, when, when the bridge over the dam was done.
Okay.
And that tower crossing was done, that was when Maple was closed, and there was another one, but I can't remember.
Maple being...
Yeah.
Okay, so there was two closed for additional...
For one, yeah.
Do we need better negotiators so it goes the other way?
We, we had Senator Rasmussen assisting us on this because the railroad is typically a, a challenge to work with. They have a lot of eminent type domain that they can pretty much do what they want.
But is, was it Genus, Genus?
Genesee, Wyoming.
Wyoming, but that's not the parent company, though.
Yeah, Otterdale Valley is a subsidiary of Genesee, Wyoming. Genesee, Wyoming is...
But the parent company is Brookfield's Infra, Infrastructure Partners. That happened in 2019.
Right. I don't know, I only know of as Genesee, Wyoming. We're dealing with Genesee, Wyoming.
Okay, because I'm thinking that would be like talking to a manager here, but the corporation is down in the Twin Cities.
Yeah.
They can't approve it. I mean...
You say Brookfield?
Yeah, Brookfield Infrastructure Partners. They, they purchased the rights to Genesee, Wyoming in 2019.
I don't have to, I don't know the answer.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, oh, yes. On East Mount Faith, where you go Pastel Grove Cemetery, being, is that railroad crossing being used? I mean, does it go anywhere? Could that be, because it looks like there's signs for a railroad crossing, but...
Going into Otterdale Power Plan?
Yeah.
I mean, technically, I think Otterdale Power has abandoned that track, but, I mean, that's a potential, but it, it's one we could close, but it would still cost us, you know, the, the cost of putting it back to a road would still be that of the city's.
It's more of the rights of the railroad, but...
Yeah.
I think it'd be probably cheaper in making it a road than a railroad, keeping it a railroad crossing. But there's just, just suggestion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dwayne. Anybody else? If not, the next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Would somebody care to, I think we have a, on the consent agenda, number eight, the resolution providing written termination of the 2021 agreement with Visit Fergus Falls effective December 31, 205, that has been requested to be pulled by Laura Jobe. With that, would somebody care to make a motion?
I'll, I'll do that, but do we need to say that we've already done our closed meeting, being that that's on the agenda?
We should.
So I'll do that, saying we've already done our closed meeting, that's K.
Right, so, so you're making the motion to approve the agenda?
Yes.
And Jim is seconding. Thank you. Roll call, please. Is this a motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those again, same sign. Hearing none, the agenda with those additions is approved. There are no public hearings this evening, there are no awarding of bids, there are no petitions and communications. We are now at the consent agenda, and the remaining items are a motion approving the minutes for the October 6, 2025 city council meeting and the October 15, 2025 Committee of the Whole meeting, a motion approving licenses, a resolution accepting the cannabis interpretation that SW Miso LLC, Yula Enterprises LLC, and Red Iris Cannabis, Inc. are hereby not approved for cannabis retail registrations due to the lack of a motion, a resolution waiving the monetary limits of municipal, municipal tort liability established by Minnesota's statute, section 466.04, a resolution of intent to proceed with the rail crossing at Union and Sheridan, resolution to implement a four-way stop pilot project at the corners of Lincoln and Mill and Lincoln and Court, a resolution declaring Unit 2091 a surplus equipment and authorizing its disposal. Would somebody care to make that resolution?
I'll have to...
Scott and Al. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Right, the next item on the agenda is a resolution providing written termination of the 2021 agreement with Visit Fergus Falls effective December 31, 2025. Laura.
Thank you. I just wanted to just kind of bring this up again, that we are terminating the current agreement and wanting to move forward with a new agreement with Visit Fergus Falls that would take effect the first of 2026. So the intent is to not have an agreement moving forward. Our intention is to sit down with Visit Fergus Falls and negotiate some terms so that we can move forward with a new agreement. And with that, I will make that motion.
Thank you, Laura.
I'll second it. Clarification. You mean it would end today, you would end today, then?
No.
Nope, it's December 31st of 2025. Yep.
Yeah, and I, I think I would just add the following comments is that, obviously, the city budget is under severe pressure at, at this point in time, which is, you know, one of the things that I think this council had pledged to do is look at all options on, on a variety of different things, including, you know, all kind of contracts that are out there, you know, that the city is, is, does have with, with third parties. The bigwood does cost the taxpayer approximately $150,000 a year, and we, we were looking at increasing the levy, you know, from a promotional campaign to try to fill the vacancies that exist out there, because obviously, like everything, the more usage that is out there, then that would help subsidize that $150,000 that is, it's costing the residents of Fergus Falls to maintain that, that property. Ultimately, Visit Fergus Falls is sitting with approximately about $250,000 in its account, and we have an, an income that's generated from the hotel tax of between 160 to 170,000 dollars per year. So pursuant to City Code 3602, the city has imposed that local tax on lodging to fund a convention and visitors bureau. And pursuant to Minnesota Statute 469190 sub three and City Code 3614, the, you know, just to clarify, that we were not looking at putting up the sales tax at the hotel level, but the, under that statute, the city, you know, collects the money, obviously, the hotel, the hotel collects the money as they do any other sales tax, whether it's for the state of Minnesota, whether it's the half-cent sales tax, and that goes to St. Paul, and then St. Paul send that, it comes to, it comes to us. And then basically, within the agreement that we currently have with Visit Fergus Falls, 3% of that is kept by the City of Fergus Falls for administration, and that was one of the things that was brought up on Wednesday, we're looking at moving that to 5%, which is allowed under that Minnesota statute. That translates from, we're collecting approximately $5,000 for the administration cost, and that would put it up about 33, 3400, depending on what it is, to a fee of about 8,250. And I think, you know, what, what we are looking at is, ultimately is to get a, a direct and more focused marketing of the convention center, which is allowed by the statute. This money is collected generally, obviously, from third-party people coming to the city of Fergus Falls, and, and it's meant, and, and its usage is for promotion of the city and the big, and the convention center. And so that's, you know, one of the goals is to try to get a focus on the, on the convention center so that that will help the citizens in that we, we can hopefully reduce that $150,000 deficit that we currently have with the convention center. And as Laura said, it is not the intent of, to, to get rid of Fergus, Visit Fergus Falls. I think under Rolando's leadership, we're seeing a lot more activity and certainly a lot, a lot more quality in the things that are getting done, and we want that to continue. We just want to understand better how we're going to market the bigwood, because it's important to the residents of Fergus Falls. So with that, I will get off my horse here, and we can, unless there's any other comments. Mike?
Yeah, Your Honor, I appreciate that. Visit Fergus Falls, they're their own entity, though, they're a 501(c)(3), they're not connected with the city, correct?
Correct.
That's correct.
Correct.
Okay, and will the council get a chance to look at this new agreement coming forward for 2026, and will that be done in a public setting or in a closed setting?
It would be in a public setting, and it would be approved by the council. So with that, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. The next item on the agenda is a resolution authorizing the purchase of an E1 100-foot aerial truck from Fire Safety USA in the amount of 2 million and 33,000 dollars. And with that, who would like to present this?
Ricketts.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah, yeah.
You've got good backing, Brian.
There is, there is good backing, yes. Well, good evening.
Thank you, Ryan.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, yes, to like what you said, you know, we just talked about some budget challenges, and here, you know, I come in front of you with a, a $2 million ask, so it is not taken lightly, and our group has definitely worked hard to, to come up with a truck build that was fiscally responsible, but also it, it got us into the future. And unfortunately, the costs of fire apparatus are, they're just ridiculous. I just, I have no words for you when it comes to that. We looked at the market under three different companies, like I reported back in August when we were at the committee meeting on kind of what the work of the committee had done. And ultimately, we, we stand by this one as a committee, and for the truck that it is and the cost that it is, yeah, so that, that's that part. And what has been built in since the last time we met, so the 20,000, or 20,000, I wish it was 20,000, 2 million 33,000, there is a $15,000 change order that's in there, because we think we got everything, but it's a big piece of apparatus, so that, that 15,000 is a, kind of that free board if we miss something during the build. And then also, there's some shelving allowance of 15,000 that we just, we can't necessarily tie down exactly where we want the shelves at, just based, we don't see the truck in front of us, and so that'll come when we actually see the truck built. So that allowance is in there for that as well. A couple of things since our last meeting, when we had, there was a couple of questions that came up. One was during the meeting, what are we going to do with our, with our current truck? The idea is to keep it running for, it's going to at least need to be in our fleet for another five years, so at that point, it'll be about 35 years old. We feel comfortable with that. I mean, anytime you start getting higher in years, it's, it's a mechanical piece of equipment, and there, we run the risk of breakdown, but the truck has been taken care of, we've refurbished a lot of parts on it, so I think we're pretty comfortable on that part of it. But at that point, though, once this new truck is here and in service, under your guys' you know, approval to do so, we would surplus the truck, and whether it, could it go to another local fire department or just get on to a more of a nationwide market for a used fire truck? Again, even last night, I quick spent a little bit of time looking at used fire trucks, and everything used is getting close to that 20-year and older, and as soon as you get into our market of a 30-year truck, what it dumps to about $100,000 or so for values at five years from now, I don't, I just don't see a lot of value. So we're not going to get a lot of cash coming back, but hopefully, the truck will be of value to somebody. A couple of things on the, on the payment piece, we certainly don't have the money sitting in our, you know, capital account today to, to make the purchase. Like I said in the memo, there are some options, typically with Bill's help and if there's others that, that help along the way, but there is a prepayment option, and just as an example, this was hot off the press today, because I want to make sure our numbers are right, but if we were to pay Fire Safety USA 400,000, which we have sitting in our capital fund, we gain 5% interest on that. So in a sense, by the time we would go to pay for the truck, we would have a deduct of 72,000. So that 2 million 33,000 subtracts 72,000 off of that. That would be paying them upfront and earning interest through them, or we may have the option to earn something better internally. So that hasn't been fully, fully worked out. And then another good question was on leasing. There is options to lease fire trucks, and I just, we talked about it early on with, with one of the reps, and then we kind of just pushed it aside, because the timeframe that, how long we keep a truck, typically a lease option, you're going to pay more in that first five to seven, maybe a 10-year lease if you could, if you could capture that long of a lease, and then you could have a lump sum payment, in a sense, to keep the truck for your, our 20 to 25 more years. So usually, you're going to pay more with a lease, where the sales rep that I talked to today said we're, like on the east coast, where departments are running thousands of calls, some of them have chose to go to a lease, because then they just know that they always have a payment, and they're going to cycle that truck after the seven-year lease, they're sending the truck back for, for a resale and putting a new truck into their fleet. I know we don't need to switch our trucks out at a, at a seven to 10-year mark, but that is one mechanism of how a lease would work. Doesn't mean you have to turn the truck in, but usually, you're going to pay that elevated interest rate for the first several years versus trying to come up with a, an internal financing plan. But so I wanted to at least share that out there a little bit, that it is an option. And, you know, I, I stand you in front of you as the fire chief, not necessarily the greatest financial person, so that's where there's smarter people in the world that can help us make that, that good decision. But ultimately, our ask is tonight, just looking for your, your approval for us to move forward with Fire Safety USA as our maker of our next ladder truck. And a fun fact, I think this is, this would be the fourth ladder truck our community has purchased or has had in its fleet since 1873. Well, probably not as far back as 1873, because they probably weren't made then, but in the early 1900s, so.
Would somebody care to make that resolution?
I will offer that.
Thank you, Jim. Somebody care to second it?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
And I want you to include in that resolution a declaration of intent to reimburse ourselves with tax-exempt bonds. We would, you know, we're saving for it, probably pay for half, and then we'd finance the other half in the year 2029, debt service would start in 2030, but I want to cover our basis now, just like we do with the street project, where we put our declaration of intent in there.
Are you good with that, Jim?
Yes, I am.
Oh, yeah.
That's what I meant.
Me too.
I, I may have made the motion for the last one, because I was, I took, I took a hideup on that.
You know, I think, I think your name is, is probably on that one. I'm pretty sure.
Right, with that discussion, Scott?
Just as a clarification, does the motion also need to include whether or not we put up the 400,000 upfront, or you want to work out the details on the payment and come back for that? Do we need to include that in the motion or not?
We haven't worked on that together yet, so that, Ryan, we can do that after this meeting, right? And then have the council take action on if they want to prepay?
We sure, we sure can, yeah. Ultimately, yeah, we can give the okay to the manufacturer, there's no money that has to be paid. So if, a month from now, if it is approved and, and we look at it and the finances work out good to give them a payment, we can come back and say that this would be at the best interest for us to, to pay them. But there is actually no money required with their, with their contracts until we take delivery. So in a sense, anything we would choose to pay upfront would, would just earn that 5%. I think they call it simple interest.
Ryan, is there any safety net? Let's say if a business goes bankrupt, that you could recoup that money back?
Yeah, and I think that's called, and Billy might have to create a performance bond, so there's a cost that goes with that, so we'd want to include that as well, you know, and there might be a statutory requirement at a certain level that we have to do that. So that would be a cost as well. Typically, the savings you get on the interest does certainly pay for what you would pay for a performance bond, but that, that's a really good question.
Mike?
Chief Muko, I, I want to thank you for your service to our city. I want to thank you for your service in trying to do this. Unfortunately, you're going to go down as the chief with the most expensive truck that was ever bought in the city, which is, it's all right, though, that's all right. So what I want to say is my support for you and everybody on that fire department is very high. Most, a lot of my family has served there multiple years, 20-some years, and retired from there. The one thing I have to do here, sitting in this seat, is make sure that I'm fiscally responsible for the city. So one of the things that I, I'd like to know is, we were looking at a grant with this type of truck, and, and can you give us just a little bit of insight to where that grant went and kind of what position it put us in a little bit?
Great question. I even had a note to mention that, so I'm glad, glad you asked. So yeah, when I stood in front of you in August, we were still waiting for, it's called the Assistance to Firefighter Grants, and that's through FEMA. They had till September 30th to award grants, otherwise, the technicality within the federal budget is all grant dollars would go back basically to the treasury. They made awards on the 29th of September, and they gave notifications to, to awardees, and we hadn't, were not awarded dollars, so that would have been a million dollars. So we would have maxed out, so a million dollars is a max award that an AFG will give to a, a fire department or a municipality, and we, we were going for the big one. We, you know, our, the, the purchase, the grant was wrote for 2 million 37,000, is at the time, that, that was what the truck was quoted at, and unfortunately, did not get that.
Yeah. Do we, and, and that would have cut our costs in half, and it would have been a great grant to have, and we all want that on this council here today. Do we have any idea where that, what, what occurred to not get that? And if, if we do, and if you don't, my question will be is, we're going to be sitting with this other truck, you know, four or five years with it, does that grant process come through every year annually? Does it come through, and is there any preference if you're denied the first time to get into a second category, let's say in 2026, for a million-dollar grant, even though a fire truck may be quarter million dollars more in that year? Do we know anything about that to, to see if we can recoup that million dollars?
So to your question of, do we know what happened? No, we don't, they don't give a, hey, you didn't get this award because of X. And, well, since the government shut down, we can't call our FEMA, our local FEMA person, which I have done that in our grants in the past, well, I shouldn't say call, I email it, because that's usually a better response. And, you know, I'll ask, like, hey, where did our grant? They can tell us where our grant stalled out at, or what, what level it made it to. And so I don't know where our grant made it in this process. Where I do know, we submitted a grant, gosh, it was either three or four years in a row for our air pack filling station, and that was a pretty small grant, and we were denied three, well, we never did receive the grant. And what I, what they did give me information back on that is, we got to the peer review point, and then it just didn't score high enough. So whether that is what we have for rainy day funds, aka our capital funds, or why, what, what measurement is put in there that says, you know, we didn't go past the peer review? We have been successful on our SEBAs two times, you know, fif, almost 15 years ago now, and then 10 to 15 years prior to that. So we have, we have received probably about a half million dollars in, in grant dollars over the course of 20, 25 years. As for moving forward with the grant, the challenge is, is once you sign into a contract with a manufacturer, you can't submit a grant for that piece of equipment. And that eventually, that's my ask to you all, is that we can start to move forward. And so it kind of closes that door. Doesn't mean we couldn't maybe look for other funding options, you know, in the interim that we have, before we actually are due to pay for the truck if it was approved, but the AFG grant for equipment or for apparatus, we would not qualify for.
And that's, that was one of my next questions with it. You know, I, I joke with you today that you're going to be buying the most expensive piece ever. It's actually an honor to be on the council and buy that piece with you. It just would have been nice to have the million dollars to help us with it. It really hurts to not have that tonight, but I'm going to support you, I'm going to vote to go forward with that, that fire engine, and I hope it's here long after I'm probably gone.
I'd add one thing to that. I just do want to note, when we applied for that grant, we knew it was a long shot, right? I mean, we, we discussed that many times, I think we did at the council at the time it was approved, so I don't think we should all hang our heads here today thinking that we, you know, did something wrong. We, we went forward with that, hoping that we'd receive it, it was a long shot, it would be a great boost halfway through this truck. But I think, Ryan, there, there's a limited pot of money for the entire country, and by having the million dollar, I mean, do you remember the number of grants over?
The grant number, I don't know how many awards, but the dollar amount was about 320 to 340 million. So you think about that nationwide, and we were asking for a million, I mean, there, one out of almost 340, I mean, not all grants. I mean, there, one out of almost 340, I mean, not all grants for $1 million, but, and maybe to also back that up is our First Ring Mutual Aid, one of our communities, they've tried for a truck grant for the last three years and have not been successful. And again, not successful this year. So they're, it's being sought after and tried, that's for sure.
I think the other thing, maybe, you know, because we have four to five years, is maybe we look at some sort of fundraising kind of like committee, you know, you know, this community has been good, you know, for funding projects like, you know, splash pads and aquatic centers and hockey arenas. And, you know, maybe that's something that we also look at is, you know, this is a big asset, and, you know, maybe, maybe this is one way you could have naming rights, you know, and call it Mike.
Your Honor, I appreciate that, and, and, you know, I would do it if I could. And I look back, and maybe Jim, as our historian, and hopefully I can call you that, Mr. Fish, I think there was a little bit of fundraising back with the old truck, you know, at the time, and the community was really engaged, and I remember that as a young kid doing that. So I think that would be fun to do with our community. Last thing, and then I won't say anymore. Impeccably prepared tonight, Chief. Absolutely great. I appreciate it.
I'd just like to make a comment, too. With that last fundraiser for equipment, or that was put together by Councilmember Layton, you're a class act. I mean, Ryan came around to different businesses and personally dropped off thank you notes. And that shows the integrity of our chief and of the department. And I'm very, very proud of that. And not only did he drop off a thank you, he listened to some of the things that I said, and I listened to what he had to say, and it was a good conversation. But that's why you're so important to our community. And that's what makes this great. It makes our community great when you firefighters love your community so much that that's what you do. And I thank you, who are out in the crowd here tonight, for your service in this. And I'm very, very impressed and honored.
Laurel, did you have something, otherwise we'll roll call?
You answered one question, and then I just had, so if this grant is a yearly thing, have we identified the next big thing, so we start applying for it now, even if it's five years out, six years out, whatever, just to see?
Such a wonderful question. So in 2032, 31, 2031, 32, our air packs actually will be coming, becoming due. And that was what we were successful on a previous grant. And the two cohorts I get to work with every day brought up a really good point. What is the wait time on those? You know, a truck is a few years out. What is the wait time on that? So that is something we're looking at. And then I know that, I think the tax levy group has, has seen our replacement plan, but again, we try to keep trucks around that 30 years, the big trucks, I should say. And the next two larger trucks are in 2033, and then an engine in 2035. So we're compressed in that mid 2030s on, on some potential big, big purchases.
Then roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
The resolution is approved. Thank you.
Your Honor, the thing I remember about the, the truck we have right now, I was the only council member that went to the top of it.
You can do that again, Jim.
I would do it again. Yes.
So were you the first one? Because if you're the first, you know, five years now, you could be the last one to take a ride in it.
I may not be, I may not be on the council in five years.
Ah, we'll find you. We're pretty good at, we're pretty good at finding addresses.
Yes.
I do appreciate all your support on behalf of the committee. It's been a lot of work, but joyous work, and thank you.
Your Honor, may I close? I want to express my appreciation to your staff. And to ease the burden of our taxpayer, let's realize that trucks are going to be bonded out in '30.
About 2030, yep.
Our current debt service out in the 30 is 30% of what it is today. So those monies are coming in at appropriate time. Al, I appreciate your comments, and I think I've given you a grant in regards to the building, some improvements there. So there are monies out there. I can't give you enough applause. Thank you and your staff. Thank you very much. And that truck, at 35 years old, looks new. Very good job.
It's a testament to the crew. They, they take care of them things, so.
It's great. Thank you. The next, just kind of like waiting and all this, like, stuff. It's getting deep.
I haven't started throwing anything at you.
Is presentation of claims in the amount of $1,352,769.36. Would somebody care to?
All for the resolution.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Who would care to second it today?
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Thank you, Scott. Any discussions? If not, roll call.
Yes.
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 Could we save those monies for the truck?
Is that a yes or no?
Yes.
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 And there is no, the resolution is approved. There is no old business or unfinished business. There is no new business. Miscellaneous announcements, October 22nd, between 8:00 and 1:00, City Hall Police and Fire Administrative Officers will be closed for staff training. October 29, 7:00 AM, a Committee of the Hall Meeting. November 3rd, 5:30, City Council Meeting. November 11, holiday closure for the observation of Veterans Day. Garbage and recycling normally picked up on Tuesday is moved to Wednesday, the 12th. With that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.